Order for my, uh, day seventeenth. Uh, Miss West, have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze? Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Cardello?
Present.
Mayor D. Maria?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica? Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Panarisi?
Here.
Ms. Sarni?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Ms. Dinah Lewis?
Here.
We have eight members present, uh, but we require, uh, Ms. Cardello is, uh, participating remotely, and Mr. La Monica could not make it due to a, um, uh, personal commitment. Um, can you rise and, um, pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Superintendent, if you can give the next, uh, one, uh, vote, please?
Absolutely. Roman number, Roman numeral three is the reading of the record.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second.
Okay, there's no way the secretary to accept the, uh, uh, the record and have it placed on file. Can a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Eight, uh, four, um, has, uh, accepted the record as written and placed on file.
Roman numeral four is public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment.
I'll second.
Okay, um, I may tell that, uh, my voice is not going to be that great. Hold on, is that any better? Yeah? Okay. All right, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, um. You voted before, correct? All right, so make a motion. Okay, so the original secretary to, um, open up public comment. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Eight more affirmative, zero negative, we have, uh, opened up for public comment. Um, do you have anything going on my line? We do not.
We do not.
Okay, uh...
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion to the secretary to close public comment. Can a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, uh, eight more affirmative, zero negative, we have closed public comment. Um, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, so Roman numeral five is the report of the superintendent, and we're gonna start this evening, uh, as usual, with the superintendent's update. Okay, so tonight's update, uh, is highlighted by the class, can you hear me? Am I okay? Is highlighted by the class of 2021, um, so in a moment, we'll get to share with you the details of senior week festivities, as well as graduation festivities, um, as we make the most of our chance to organize these special events for our seniors before this year comes to an end. We are also happy to report that today marked the beginning of the second full week of in-person teaching and learning for EHS students. Also on our agenda for this evening is sharing, uh, the excellent speaker series. We have planned for the district celebration of Asian American Pacific Islander Month, and providing updates on EHS athletics, our attendance, learning choice percentages, and the most recent COVID data. We will conclude with the details of a mobile vaccination clinic that will be available to our students on May twenty-first and June fourth. But to start, uh, I'd like to, uh, make a quick message about our... Did you hear them? To start with our teachers and staff. So as you probably know, Teacher Appreciation Week was May third through seventh, although I think every, uh, week should be Teacher Appreciation Week. As a small token of appreciation, we did give all of our teachers, uh, coffee mugs adorned with the EPS logo. Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week was also made very special and meaningful by the work of our school leaders and our parent-teacher organizations. So, um, the PTOs worked very hard, the Kavarian, uh, PTO, for example, had treated the staff to a food truck, while the Whittier PTO purchased lunch from Panera Bread for the staff, just to name two quick examples. You know, um, there's really, it, it's hard to describe, you know, my feel, my feelings of positivity for teachers and our profession, especially this year. You know, it's been impossible to really quickly and accurately even describe the lengths to which our teachers have gone to help us meet the challenges of COVID-19. So I feel like we've tried in a bit during these meetings to really demonstrate what that's looked like, and all the creativity, um, and the tireless hours that they have spent working, but I, I don't feel like it could ever be mentioned too much, and I never cease to be impressed by the creative ways in which teachers have set up their classrooms and work areas, um, how they've transitioned in order to teach the students who are in the classroom and the students who are at home. Uh, to illustrate, I did just want to share with you part of the communication that Vice Principal McCarthy sent to the staff at the end of the first week of in-person instruction for the high school. He mentioned that everywhere he looked, he saw so much evidence of our educators' commitment to students. Uh, he saw a gym teacher doing push-ups in front of a MacBook in the auditorium, a department head's problem-solving behind the scenes, guidance counselors helping students enroll in college and fill out their FAFSA forms, a student advocating for virtual classes in the auditorium because the seats in there are more comfortable, a director hustling to make sure students got the tech that they need, custodians working as they have for long hours to sanitize our buildings, and our cafeteria staff traveling to feed our in-person students. So these highlights are emblematic of the work that I feel like we've seen in our schools every hour of every day. Um, you know, throughout the entire school year, it's just taken on different forms. And so, you know, the, really, the only way to truly appreciate what our staff is doing, um, is to be able to, to witness it, and I do know that many of our families have been able to kind of get a window into it, uh, from their home as their students are zooming in. But I just want to thank the teachers again for all they're doing, and all of our educators as well. So turning our attention to the class of 2021, Everett High School has planned a festive schedule of senior events. Senior week will begin on Tuesday, June first, with a luau at the Cowloon Restaurant, which has a large outdoor space that is perfect, you know, for safe and fun social setting. On Tuesday, June second, seniors will be treated to an ice cream and taco truck as a lead-in to their EHS virtual talent show, uh, that will showcase our students' varied and considerable talents. On Wednesday, June third, seniors will participate in a sunrise spectacular. So early risers will be meeting at the Everett Stadium to catch the sunrise and take selfies and photos. And then capping off the week will be a red carpet extravaganza at Everett High School. So this special event is scheduled for Thursday, June fourth, around the front entrance and parking area of Everett High. So this event kind of borrows from some of the aspects of last June's drive-through graduation, and that we'll have stations set up where students can have a professional photo taken, film a thirty-second legacy video, receive senior gifts from the district and our community partners. We will be broadcasting the event on YouTube Live so that everyone can watch the festivities, which will start at eleven AM and end at four PM, as we are giving seniors time slots to arrive at EHS the same way that we did for graduation last year. So while we don't know what the future holds as far as graduation festivities, I do think that the drive-through component of our senior week festivities may become somewhat of a tradition. The following week, we have Scholarship Night on June eighth, which will be held via Zoom for the second consecutive year, and of course, the culmination of all of these events, which is our graduation ceremony on the ninth. So our graduation ceremony is set for Wednesday, June ninth, at six PM, inside Veterans Memorial Stadium, with a rain date of June tenth. You know, in talking with the EHS students, teachers, families, it was quickly determined that students did want to do a traditional graduation, if it was possible, which we're so happy that it is. And so this was a request that we were thrilled, thrilled to be able to fulfill for them this year. And I do want to thank everybody who's been working very hard at EHS to coordinate this list of events. So now on to sports. Uh, last Friday was the end of the Fall Two season, and today marked the beginning of the Spring season. So our Fall Teams played one game each versus every GBL team, uh, the Greater Boston League team, plus Chelsea High for a total of seven games. These teams also participated in GBL Cup tournaments. Uh, the exceptions to this were field hockey, which is a sport that's not offered at every GBL school, and our football team, which played three games instead of the originally scheduled four. So the Crimson Tide Football Team won all three of its games by a combined score of a hundred and twenty-seven to thirty-two. Our Boys Soccer Team won four games before being upset by Lynn English in the opening round of the GBL Cup. And in field hockey, Everett upset Revere in the semifinals of the GBL Cup before falling to Malden in the title game. As we've said before, all of our teams are definitely benefiting from the reformation of the GBL. The competition is very good across the board, and it's so much better to be able to partner with schools that are close geographically, with whom we've shared a history. Another highlight to our sports seas, season so far has been the live streams that are being produced by our television crew. So these fantastic productions have garnered high praise in Everett and among fans from other cities, too, actually. In fact, this past Friday, our TV team broadcast the Tide Classical Football Game to cable audiences in Everett and in Lynn. In spring competition, the Crimson Tide will field baseball, softball, crew, lacrosse, tennis, and outdoor track teams. The schedule calls for one game versus every GBL opponent, followed by the possibility to play in MIAA state tournaments and meets. So state tournaments were not held for the winter and fall two seasons, so postseason play is a nice addition, um, if possible, to the last stage of the revamped 2021 sports calendar. And lastly, on the sports front, I did want to applaud the city for the recent opening of the new tennis courts at Rosetti Park. It is a beautiful facility, uh, featuring Crimson Courts and E logos. This week, EPS is participating in Asian American Pacific Islander celebrations through a series of events and speakers that are appropriate for our different grade levels. All of them will allow our students and staff to engage in this important event in a meaningful, um, educational and enjoyable way. So our youngest students from kindergarten through third grade will be treated to a reading by author, actor, and activist Shithol Shape. She will read her award-winning book Always Anjali, which is an uplifting story that teaches us to appreciate what makes us special, um, and celebrate our differences. The Taiwanese-American author Grace Lynn, um, will read from her book, Where the Mountain Meets the Moon, to our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. So this book, uh, received more accolades and honors to list, and I'm sure our students will enjoy this epic journey as well. For our seventh and eighth graders, we are inviting Mr. Sam Mahara to give a presentation on mass imprisonment of Japanese-Americans during World War II. In fact, Mr. Mahara is one of the few survivors of this tragedy who speaks nationally about his experience. And then at Everett High, we are connecting our students with a speaker who can directly address the theme of this year's AAPI Month celebration. Boston City Councilor and Mayor Oral Candidate Michelle Wu will be talking to our students about the theme entitled, "Advancing Leaders Through Purpose-Driven Service." So as the daughter of immigrants and primary caregiver to her sisters while she was a college student, Ms. Wu's background is filled with things that our students can definitely relate to. So we already started some of these events today, and they were wonderful, and we're excited to continue them through the course of this week. So switching to our COVID-19 data, here you see Everett's daily incidence rate and percent positivity. Everett does remain in the yellow medium-risk category according to the state and federal ratings. Again, all of this shows how far we have come in recent months. We are all aware of the, you know, the brightening situation nationwide, as evidenced by the CDC issuing some relaxed guidance, um, as well as the news today from Governor Baker regarding COVID-19 protocols in Massachusetts. As encouraging as this all is, we will continue to remain vigilant in our safety measures at school, and we will share more detailed information with families soon about how the new guidance will impact any school procedures, if it does. But for now, I think it's most important just to remind the EPS community that we will be continuing to require face coverings in our schools at all required times, and that we will be continuing with our physical distancing. So another, uh, data point that we look at is, uh, the number of confirmed cases for school-aged children. So here we see the month-by-month totals, uh, student, uh, not students necessarily, um, but our children ages zero to nineteen, whether they're in our schools or not. We've seen cases, um, as have all districts, since the in-person rollout began. Um, but it is useful to note that the totals are far lower than in January and February, when we were effectively in a fully remote model. So we do think that that is somewhat promising. Obviously, again, we're doing everything in our power to limit the spread of COVID in our schools and classrooms, and, uh, that will not change. We will always follow the guidance, but we will, you know, be more conservative in order to make sure that we are, you know, remaining as safe and keeping our students and staff as safe as possible. Our pool testing is a helpful part of our prevention efforts, too. So this slide shows our participation levels, which while modest, they have definitely risen over the last three weeks. I think I reported on this last time, when we were only two weeks in. We do administer the pool tests on Monday, and as we have discussed in the past, the test is free. It is fast, and it is painless, and even though we are nearing the end of the school year, I definitely would still encourage families and staff to participate in this useful mitigation measure, because the more participants we have in it, the better. These slides show our final breakdown of students who have chosen to attend in-person classes or remain in remote learning. So district-wide, sixty percent of our students have returned to buildings, while forty percent continue to participate in e-education. Among our high school students, remote education is easily the preferred model at approximately seventy-five percent, while the opposite is true with the pre-K through eighth-grade level, where sixty-six percent are back in classrooms compared to thirty-four percent who are remote. So when we look a little deeper at the pre-K through eight breakdown, this shows that in-person was the more popular choice at the elementary level. As we did discuss at our last meeting, the numbers did move closer to fifty-fifty as we got into the middle school level. We suspect that some of the reasons that prompted sixth, seventh, and eighth graders to stick with remote learning were also motivators for our high schoolers as well. So namely, there just aren't that many days left on the calendar, and it is not the best time to rearrange plans. And of course, many of our high school students work, which is a larger topic of conversation, and which is definitely forcing educational leaders everywhere to, you know, think about what aspects of the COVID, COVID experience might not only have permanent ramifications, but also potentially even permanent solutions, um, in being innovative in the way we provide instruction. Our outreach efforts, uh, were thorough, and I did want to thank our school leaders and our teachers for making sure their students were aware of the learning choice they had. I, you know, credit the school leaders and their staff for reaching out to families in a variety of ways, including parent and student portals, information session and webinars by grade level, and translated robocalls and emails. And while I touched on this during our last meeting, I definitely wanted to stress it again. You know, that the percentages of students who have returned to a school, classroom, a grade, or just our district as a whole i- is just that a number. Uh, there was a choice for families who have weighed any number of considerations, um, from some that are practical to others that are more, more serious when deciding between remote and in-person. And so we do want to just reiterate that we support all of our students and all of our families. There was no right or wrong decision in this. And the fact that we were able to provide this choice is what really matters, and that our teachers have skillfully managed the challenges of teaching students both in-person and at home is also, uh, very important to us as well. And then finally, uh, to wrap up tonight's update, we are pleased to be part of a desperately needed effort to bring the vaccine to underserved communities in Massachusetts. So Tufts Health Plan and Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare have joined forces to start something called Mobile Vax, which is an initiative aimed at delivering the COVID vaccine to disproportionately impacted communities and non-English-speaking populations. I do want to thank committee member Almeida Barros for initiating this partnership with the Everett Public Schools. The Mobile Vax will be coming to Everett High School on Friday, May twenty-first, and on Friday, June fourth. Registration and consent forms will be sent to our students. Uh, both the consent form and the signature page, signature pages on the intake forms must be filled out prior to a minor receiving the vaccination, unless they are accompanied by their parent or guardian on that day. First doses will be administered on May twenty-first from eight AM to two PM for EPS students, and on Friday, June fourth, for EHS seniors, as part of Senior Week, and also will be opening it to members of the community at that time. Everyone who receives the first dose will receive information about receiving the second dose. Appointments are strongly encouraged, but we are going to be accepting walk-ins as well. And again, the proper pay, paperwork and signatures are required for minors. So this is the first of what we hope will be several opportunities to provide to our students in the coming months to receive a vaccination. We are also in the process of coordinating with the Cambridge Health Alliance, who were instrumental in vaccinating our teachers back in April. Uh, but we do encourage our students, uh, to take advantage of this first opportunity to receive the vaccine as we try to set the stage for a full return to regular routines for the 2021, 2022 school year. So that brings me to the end of my presentation. Thank you for your attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sorry about that. Um, any questions to the superintendent on her update? Seeing none? Thank you. Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to suspend the rules and take item six, four out of order, um, to accommodate our guest speakers.
Okay, so, all right. Second. All right, so motion made a second to suspend the rules and take, uh, Roman number six, number four, to discuss the newly-created Youth Council. Lambert?
Do we vote?
Yep. Then if you want to be the, uh, students who I need to vote.
Thank you, I, I make a motion to invite Mr. Khan Lau and Ms. Samaga Pokaral.
A second.
Okay, uh, motion made a second to bring the students forward. Roll call, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine more affirmative, zero negative. If the students can come forward, please, and Ms. Lambert, you have the floor?
Thank you, so I wanted to invite, um, two of our Everett High School students who have worked diligently over the course of the last several months to create a youth advisory council on the city side, and, um, really just give them space to discuss this and answer any questions that folks have as they're working to, um, they're right now in the application process and building the council, so I will hand it over to them, and please, Mr. Lau and Ms. Pokaral, please take it away.
Thank you so much for the introduction. Um, so my name is Khan, and I'm a sophomore at EHS.
Yeah, my name is Samaga, and I'm currently a junior at EHS.
Um, so the purpose of us being here is that we just wanted to formally introduce ourselves on behalf of the Everett Youth Initiative Council. Um, we're technically like the founders, but I really don't like calling us that. We just came up with some of the ideas here, and we're really honored to be here, um, speaking to about our, like, work the past couple of months. Um, yeah, so the main goal of our Youth Council is, um, to bring back basically the initiative and drive and attention back on local politics, and also, like, drive change on a city level. So I think, um, it's really important that we build this connection between the school committee and the Youth Council. So, yeah.
Yeah, our main goal is to create a focus on, you gotta revolve around teen issues at Everett and tackling them, but we will need support from the school, which is why we wanted to come here to talk a little more about what it is and the application process, and where we're heading, so you guys actually have a clue of, like, where things are going in the process, because we will need your full support.
Yeah, so initially, um, our application deadline was, um, May tenth, but we extended by a week because, uh, we need more time to reach out to as many people as possible and get as many applicants as possible. Um, but, yeah, the, the application deadline ends today. But, yeah, I think it, it's really good use of time here to talk about our goals and introduce ourselves to the school committee.
Yeah, and currently in our timeline, we're hoping to start early on by June, and then afterwards, summer, the people that get selected get their summer off, and then we'll meet again in the next school year. Khan, you want to add anything?
Uh, not really. Does anyone have any questions?
Please have the floor.
I'll yield my call to Ms. Murray.
Um, I just have a question about the ages for, under which kids can apply to be part of this work. Is it just for high school kids, or is it for, um, age middle schoolers as well? Um, how young are you going with this kind of work?
Yeah, so right now, um, we're planning on doing fourteen to eighteen, but then in the future, when we get our members and for, to advertise it to the middle schoolers, um, so that this continues to occur, and even after we live, um, off high school, even after we go on to college, this still continues. So we are looking to involve middle schoolers in the future, but right now, it's just the high schoolers that are in between the age support team.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Mr., Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But I believe, uh, Mr. Lau had something to say, so if I, if he may complete, finish his thoughts, and then I can, I can ask a question.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, uh, another thing I would like to add, uh, is that, uh, this work is on a city level, so it's not exclusively just, um, for EHS students, but it's actually, um, any resident who is between fourteen to eighteen and lives in Everett.
Thank you. So is there any, uh, you guys mentioned, uh, a little about your initial goals. Is there any particular initial project that you are, uh, working on? Or that, well, sort of that we, that we as, as a body can help with? I personally would love to, uh, get involved and help as much as I can. Is there any initial, uh, project that you have? I know you mentioned about your goals, but any initial project that you have right now that we perhaps could help with?
Yeah, so currently, we were thinking of, like, having the members all come together and decide among the issues that we want to tackle with, and because we haven't really gotten our members, the technical projects haven't really been developed and planned, but we were thinking for the school year and for the next... But we were thinking for the school year and for the next mainly focusing on mental health because of COVID nineteen, everything. However, we're also looking to do projects involving other factors as well.
Thank you. Anything we can be helpful with, please let us know.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thanks, I have, uh, Ms. Diana Lewis.
Um, so do you have any idea like what teen issues? I think you mentioned teen issues. You will be, you have any ideas or already set in place situations or topics maybe around?
Uh, you kind of cut up a little bit in the middle, but from what I've heard, you asked about like what topics or like issues that we want to combat as a council? Yeah. Yeah, so once we get the methods and get the fundamentals such as the biolaws and stipends in place, uh, we'll decide on as a council of like what issues are important to each individual member and then convene and try to tackle those issues within that like term of the, of the individual member.
Okay. Ms. Lewis, you all set?
Yes, I'm all set.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions of the guest? Okay. Ms. Lambert, your pleasure.
Well, I do thank you both for attending and for giving us this overview. We're really excited to see. I know myself personally, but I'm confident that my colleagues are as well in working with you. Not just in school issues, but on the greater community issues that you're looking at, and I think that benefits all of us. So, so great work in getting started, and we look forward to meeting the full team once you get once you get all your applications.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you so much for having us today. It really meant a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Um, I'll make a motion to excuse the customary thanks.
Okay, uh, so excuse the customary thanks. I do need a roll call for that. Okay, motion made a second for, uh, roll call to excuse the customary thanks.
Mr. Abaze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ninety zero. Thank you for your appearance tonight. We look forward to working with you.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us. Bye.
Okay, on the piece itself, uh, do you want to refer that back to sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I can make a motion to refer back to the sponsor.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to refer, um, number six, number four back to sponsor. Roll call vote, please. Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, ninety affirmative, zero and negative, you referred the back to sponsor. And we can resume our regular order of business. Reported this superintendent number two.
Thank you so much. So item number two is the Safe Roots to School presentation. Similar to many districts Everett participates in the Safe Roots to School Program, which is a free federally funded K to eight public school program that works to increase student walking and biking. At this time, I would respectfully request to invite Judy Crocker from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Safe Roots to School Program to provide an update on their programmatic elements, the Everett Program, and propose next steps for our community.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion has been amended seconded to bring Ms. Crocker before us. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abaze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows. Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yeah.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, the affirmative, zero, negative five. Welcome, Ms. Crocker. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for allowing me to have a conversation with you. I greatly appreciate it. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I assume you received it in your packet, but I just wanted to review it for conversational pieces tonight and also for anyone viewing from the audience.
So finish your screen.
Here we go. All right. Um, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. I only see a few heads, so that's why. Thank you so much. So thank you for the introduction. So again, my name is Judy Crocker. I work for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. The Safe Roots to School Program is a free federally funded program for grades, public schools and public charter schools, grades K through eight. And it is a collaborative, community-based effort to really connect the gaps between health and transportation. The focus of the program is active transportation. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview, as was stated, of the program, and then talk about what's going on in Everett. So basically, no matter how your child gets to school, we want them to be safe. The program does focus on walking and biking. However, we do a lot of parent education and a little bit with school buses in terms of circulation planning. So the program is not one size fits all. So basically, every community has different needs, and even sometimes every school within a district could have different needs. So these are some of the so-called hot topics that we tend to deal with. For example, I see on your agenda this evening, you have an SOI for a new school and also looking at a redesign for the Madeleine English parking lot. You know, those are some things that we actually deal with. We do site circulation planning, we work with new construction, et cetera. So we're looking at the built environment as well as physical activity, attendance. Depends what you're looking for. The program has a public health foundation, which is commonly referred to as the six Es, which are listed here. I'm going to very briefly review those with you tonight. I do like to say that the program is not a stay in lane program. As much as everything we do is school centric, and every report, for example, that we produce, the school owns it. We equally work with municipal, we work with DPW, planning, engineering, the police. And in the community, we might work with the local Y, Mass In Motion, et cetera. So I also like to call this the chicken and the eggs, because I think so many of us have heard in the past. A parent might say, I don't want my child walking to school because it's just too much traffic and the cars go too fast, et cetera. And yet, what do they do? They get in the car. So it's cycles like that for behavior modification that we're trying to enhance. So under evaluation, we do a lot of mapping. We have two different styles of mapping. The one that you see on the left-hand side here is actually, it tells us where the students live. So we use pretty much scrub student attendance data, and so you have a hundred percent participation. So we have, we know where everybody is. From that, we can create what we call route maps. They can be used for troubleshooting the neighborhoods in terms of, say, this overgrowth vegetation or you need better signage, improved signage, something like that for the different neighborhoods. It really helps DPW and engineering in the neighborhoods per se, puts on the ground. And it also tries to clarify for the students and the families, you know, where everyone lives and how they're navigating to school. So we use those maps to create what we call walking school buses, which again, today they give everything a name, but it's how most of us grew up. You leave your house, pick up a friend, pick up another friend. Today, they call that a walking school bus. We also have what we call park and walk locations, which we can identify on our maps. Those help reduce the congestion, traffic congestion in and around our school zones. And so basically, they just, again, we're all counting our steps, looking for areas where we can suggest people park. They could be a church parking lot, it could be a public street, the list is endless. So, and from those, we form what we call walking school buses and bike trains. And then from that, we celebrate, we have a whole toolbox of low-cost, no-cost ways how we can make it a little bit more fun for the kiddos. The second form of mapping that we have under evaluation is actually what we have here with the parent travel survey. The only school in Everett that has performed this is the Whittier in twenty eighteen. So from that, you can see, it looks like it's basically a walking shed. So the red dot is the school. The yellow, the pink, I'm sorry, is half a mile from the school. The light purple is a mile, dark purple, a mile and a half. And you can pretty much see approximately if the dots are the students, where they live. This survey, we have it available in nine languages. It is, takes about two minutes. It tells us approximately where the students live. Again, it's anonymous and how they get to school. That's why the different dots are different colors. So in twenty eighteen, for the Whittier School, the average distance to school was about just over half a mile. And almost eighty percent of your students lived within a fifteen-minute walk to the school. So however, that being said, more than forty percent of the students still took a car. So it just, it gives us different information to help understand what's going on in the community. When we talk about engineering, we talk a lot about arrival dismissal observation. So if you look at the upper left photo, that is a school. So we're looking at the school property itself. When we look at a school property, we're looking at how modes of transportation are separated. Where are the buses or special education vans? Where are the walkers and bikers coming? Where is the parent traffic? How do you use your front door? What type of signage that you have? When we zero out from, when the school day really starts today, from the student's front door, that's the lower left photo. So you're talking about the neighborhood where the student must pass through in order to get to the school. We call that a walk audit. So that's the difference between the two. For a walk audit, we try to stay within a mile and a half, two miles of the school at the furthest. And we did do a walk audit for six schools in Everett in twenty twenty. So I'll talk about that in a minute. So our focus, we do a lot of focus on the school zone itself, though. But another angle that we can use this information is what we call arrival dismissal planning. And from that, you know, we all like to say that rules apply to everyone, but so many times we ask schools, well, what are your rules? And they tend to be car-centric. That's why we call this arrival dismissal planning and not drop off and pickup. So we tried to formulate a one-page document. The front of it would be the map. As you see, it's the sample in the lower right, where we just use a picture of the school and identify where the different modes of transportation should be. And then the backside of that, again, explaining all the different modes of transportation, what your rules really are. And again, this is customizable. This is not one size fits all, because every school has different geographic footprint, and we're looking for different challenges and different successes. We also suggest including school hours and or the belt schedule. The next is education, which we spend a lot of time on. Our pedestrian safety curriculum is actually skill-based, so it is a DESI-approved health and wellness curriculum. We are actually have requested DESI to do official professional development, but we also do our best with our PE and health teachers currently in so that they can adopt the full curriculum that we use. Use, these are thirty-minute outdoor lessons. However, they're on school property, so you don't need a permission slip. And they're sidewalk, crosswalk, and parking lot safety. And we tend to gear those to a second grade in the spring and then third grade in the fall. So you're bookending the same cohort around the summer vacation. However, we can do grades K through eight. It's, it's really what you need. For our bike safety, we do not have a bicycle for every child, so we cannot say that this is skill-based, so it is more assembly style. We talk a lot about personal safety, everything from helmets, dress-to-be-seen footwear, keeping your bike safe, and then rules of the road, everything from, you know, riding a single line, how to negotiate an intersection to take out the earbuds and, you know, no distracted riding, please. And again, we have many videos on this online for teachers and staff geared toward different ages. We have written materials with the bike assembly. We can do it virtually. We can do it outside, we can do it inside. We usually suggest grades, more grades four to eight. However, again, we can customize this for whatever you might be looking for. The other part of our education is for parents. We like to try to educate parents that they are not in traffic, they are the traffic. It's trying to educate them about what your rules are for your school in and around the school zone. So whether you have a queue of traffic on a regular basis, as in on the left, all those little green men or slow signs and things like that, which I've seen quite a few in Everett in the upper right. And then on the bottom right, you have anything goes. So, you know, this is where the picture is actually taken on the street in front of an elementary school. And so you would have to work with DPW and engineering from the municipality because the school doesn't have jurisdiction of the road as much as the school property itself. So, and this happens all too many times in too many communities. The school bus you see in the picture is actually not going to this elementary school. It's trying to do its middle school route before it can get to the elementary school, and it's stuck in the elementary school traffic. So it happens. We do have a driver awareness tip sheet for parents, which is available in nine languages, as well as an arrival dismissal sheet, again, available in nine languages. Encouragement is the fun part. This is where we celebrate how the kids get to school. We have three flagship events, which a number of Everett schools participate in. We have International Walk to School Day in October. I should mention that Safe Roots to School is, did not originate in the United States. It's actually in about forty-plus countries. It originated in Denmark. It's in all fifty states. The parent for it, the parent organization, is the Department of Transportation. Thus, we are Massachusetts Department of Transportation. And Safe Roots is actually in about sixty-five percent of Massachusetts communities. So the second flagship event, we have a winter walk in February, and last couple weeks, we've had Massachusetts Walk to School Day in May. We have, again, many, many different ideas, how to make it fun and exciting for the kids. What you see here is crazy sock day. It doesn't get more simple than that. And this is also, I mentioned already, walking school buses and park and walk. And we also do task force formations, you know, where do Safe Roots live in your school, in your district, in your community. So sometimes it, in some communities, it's with the police, and some communities, it's the principals or the school nurse, and others, it's the PTO. So it just depends what works best for you. And again, for encouragement, we have some different ways to engage the kids. We have, we just rolled out our very first, and it definitely going to be an annual crossing guard appreciation. So we're going to have some awards in a couple of weeks, on June second. We have lawn sign contests. The theme this year was dress-to-be-seen. Last year, it was that hands-free phone law, et cetera. And we also have, you know, walking during school, whether it be recessed, gym class, something like that. So we have, these are both poster size, the stick, the posters on the bottom. Engagement. Engagement, formerly known as enforcement, is where we work more with the police departments and school resource officers. We have a lot of training materials, videos, and in writing, in English and Spanish, again, all on our website. I've already mentioned the arrival fiscal planning. Here we have, I was doing a bike assembly in a local community where the police called me in because they were concerned about something, so I asked them, do you want, you know, a few minutes of time? And so they are talking with the kids about a specific incident that they had in their community and, and why they want everyone to be safe. Equity is pretty much the umbrella under which the entire organization works. We do a lot with two main school policies. We've actually partnered with the MAS. We do a lot with two main school policies, we've actually partnered with the MAS C. And I have worked a little bit with the MAS S and MSBA to do a school transportation and mitigation policy, which is, and counsel right now, is that legal? But we also have wellness amendments, so every school district has a wellness policy. And we're suggesting with, you know, canned language, if you would, just so you don't have to reinvent the wheel, how to add active transportation to your wellness policy. All wellness policies already include physical activity, but in terms of how your students get to and from school, it's important to. We do use multiple languages, we do include students of all abilities. And the diagram that you see here is, it captures, it could capture the feeling a little bit in Everett. As many as, you know, you have, might have some elementary schools that have used the program a number of times. And you might have some elementary schools that have used it, kind of zero to one. And so, you know, we're trying to make it equitable for every, say, second grade student in the city. So that's why we're, we're preferred to go kind of a top down approach, if at all possible, just so all students are afforded the same benefits. The money, everyone always wants to know what the money is, so here we go. So there are three main financing paths that Safe Roots program can take. We do have a large infrastructure application program. Considerable amount of money was given away in 2019. With COVID, it has not been resurrected since then, but it's just the way it goes sometimes. The Safe Roots of School, the Signs and Lines program, so signs would be regulatory signage and lines would be pavement markings. So this is more of a mini grant, however, we do provide the technical engineering assistance behind it. It's been extremely popular, and we've done this now for three years. And this usually has application dates in September, October. And the completion date is within the school year. So this is a relatively quick program. Versus the infrastructure application program is usually part of a tip, so it takes much longer. I would also like to mention the Mast Dot Share Streets and Spaces Grant. It was very popular last year, given current events with COVID. And it has just, two weeks ago, they just rolled out the next phase of the program. And again, this is a quick complete grant, similar to our Signs and Lines program. And it has different criteria, so it's more active transportations for the whole community. You do get bonus points for this submittal, for having checked off the Safe Roots of School, Safe Roots for seniors, or Safe Roots for open spaces and parks criteria. So we're very excited about that. We do have a document that we, in a webinar that we had last summer, last, right after the DESI transportation guidelines came out in July. I have given this to all the principals. So we have, keeping our finger on the pulse, so to speak. So Everett, where we are today, so we have, you're, again, your K through middle schools are all partnered, so we thank you for that. The program in the past has worked with Mass Emotion and the Joint Committee for Children's Healthcare here in Everett. Some of your program, your schools rather, have been, I would call them intimately active. We have a couple of schools that have been, you know, they're pretty good about doing regular pedestrian safety, occasional flagship day, just again, that one travel survey. And a couple of years ago, there was a child incident at the Lafayette, so they called us in to do arrival dismissal observation. We did do the walk audit, I'm sorry, of the five elementary schools in 2020. And we do have that document, and I have reviewed that with a few principals, and a few principals have not gotten back, which is, it's been a busy year, we fully understand that. From that, the Parlin and Webster did request arrival dismissal draft plans, which I have submitted to them. And they just have to get back to me now. So Everett, these are some of the things that we have found in Everett. The upper left picture is actually the Lafayette. And actually, the, you're supposed to, for this bike rack, you're supposed to put your tire perpendicular to the rack, and it's actually placed too close to the stone wall, so it's, it's very difficult to use. The center picture of that stop sign is at the kevlar in. And it's actually not a regulatory sign when you leave the parking lot. So the police would not be able to enforce that, because it's not regulatory. The next picture for the Webster, you do have what we call a school street, where they actually closed down part, a small part of the street on one side of the school for arrival dismissal. And that's some of the materials that they use, that they store on the sidewalk. The signage on the right lower is also the Webster, and this is something I'd love to have a conversation with, with DPW. It's like reading a storybook, you've got so many signs on one pole, so just a lot going on there. And then the bottom picture actually took a few years ago at the Lafayette. So the right hand car, the red car, is actually parked under a no parking sign, as long, as well as the cars in front of it. On the left, far left with the silver car is, that's actually legally parked to traffic. But then the silver car in the second lane is in the street, is actually those alive parked on the street. So that school bus is actually on the wrong side of the street, trying to approach the school, because there's so much parent traffic. And please understand, this happens in every community, this is not idea, singular to Everett. So proposed next steps, would love to really, you know, get some momentum behind the program, maybe form a task force, so we have the players in the room. Love to be able to conduct pedestrian and bicycle safety for your PE teachers. That way, the program can be in all your schools, elementary and middle school. And this is, it takes an hour and a half, it's easy to do. Thank you for having me this evening. So this is a check mark for school committee. Would, would love to have conversation with your policy subcommittee about adopting the wellness policy amendments. And again, just arrival dismissal planning, route maps, if you're interested in that. And from that, we can do walking school buses, and then just working to engage more families to consider walking and biking from the start of the new school year. So there's a lot there, and it just really depends on what approach you want to take. And I always like to end with a photo about our students, because at the end of the day, everything that we are all doing here tonight is all about the kids. So we just like to celebrate our student commuters. So, and that is my presentation. So I promised fifteen minutes, so. And I would like to give a shout out to Rena Woodby, who's in the room tonight. She's our Mass Emotion Coordinator for the City of Everett. So she's been a great partner. Are there any questions?
Yes, I see we have Ms. Lambert, and then Ms. Cardello and Ms. Lewis. So Ms. Lambert, questions to Ms. Crocker?
Thank you, and thank you so much, Ms. Crocker, this was great. It was interesting, because as soon as the agenda was posted, parents had reached out. You know, now that it's, it's only been a month that students have been back. And, you know, kind of the stress around now the traffic's back, now everything's back. So do you primarily work with the principals or the district leadership?
We can do it in any direction. Again, there are some communities where it's more outside the school. There's other communities, if, for example, in Everett, I've been working, working more with certain principals, you know, doing pedestrian safety, say at the Parlin or the Whittier or Lafayette. So it's really, it's, you know, it's however you are just to be structured.
The PTO, I was gonna say, so like a parent organization, I know one of the schools, they have, they'd like an observation. And they'd like to see, because, and certainly it's, we have some main thoroughfares, so there's impacts on other streets, if you have traffic mitigations for the school. So, you know, it gets really involved, but I was just wondering, like, what is the best way for them to reach out? Is it through their building principal, school committee?
No, you guys are the top of the pinnacle, we don't have to, you know, bother you with this in terms of a one on one. So, you know, we all know PTOs, that's your boots on the ground, that's your energy, that, that's a big part of the workforce here as volunteers. As long as the principal gives the high sign, because it's there, they're the property managers for the school, if you would. I'd love to work with PTOs. I have to say, most of my schools, the Safe Roots committees are the, are PTO subcommittee. So actually, the Parlin PTO reached out to me earlier today and asked if I could speak at their meeting in two weeks. So if any school wants an arrival dismissal plan, you know, they just have to contact me. And that's, that's very easy to have done. But we, you know, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, there's only weeks left. So I need to put this on my calendar, because it's not a walk audit I did last summer. I don't need the students in school, but arrival dismissal, I do need the students in school, so I can see what's going on.
Completely understand, and certainly, you know, we have some other big projects in Everett with the bike trail that's going to connect. Major routes, I'd love to be able to work with you next year, once that's finished, to get more education out, because I think that just opens up a whole nother possibility for students. And that feels safer for parents, because it's not necessarily crossing streets. And so, not, that wasn't so much a question, but more a comment. But thank you so much, and I think this was great, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, next up is Ms. Cardello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Crocker, thank you for appearing tonight in very well done presentation. I'm at the Webster every day, because I take my grandson to and from school. And what I wanted to say is a couple of things. It's, it's always been a debacle there. But what I will say is, because of the way of the arrival and dismissal this year, at least the foot traffic is a lot better, it's a lot less confusing. And we did that because of COVID, you know, the earlier arrival and the earlier dismissal later. But we still have the car pro, you're always going to have the car pro, as long as everyone's around the kids to school. What I will say is, that signage on the corner of Dartmouth, you know, that you need a magnifying glass for, that wasn't always like that, there was a better sign up there before, but this year, that sign is there. And it's personally not readable from your car, you just really don't see that. But Mr., and I'm sure you've met Mr. Barrett at the principal of the Webster, what they've decided to do is they take a tent sign now, to stop people from making that right. And do put there, say, do not enter, so it's clearly marked. And you're right, they do shut off Screw Street from Jefferson to Dartmouth, and that's only allowed for the buses. You know, for the children that take buses. And I totally admire Mr. Barrett, and also Mr. Malloy, and any of the others that step outside to help. Because there, we only have, this year, we only have one crossing guard. So they are out there keeping our parents and our children safe every day. So yeah, something, this has to be looked at very seriously. And, you know, we'll move forward with you, and thank you again for this presentation.
You're quite welcome. The committee might find it as background information, if you want some easy reading. I can forward to Ms. Celestin, the walk audit that I did in 2020. So again, all the principals have it, but you might, just so you understand what, what we actually did there. And I was remiss, a former principal, I'm so sad that he left Everett, John Oblinsky, actually authored a walking school bus book. And I have to, I, I want to show it up to you so terribly badly. It's in my office in Boston that I can't quite get into right now, still. So I apologize, I don't have it physically in hand, but, you know, he was quite a champion of the program.
Thank you, up next time is Ms. Lewis, Student Web.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, ma'am, for the presentation. This program is for students who are disabled, students who aren't disabled as well, right?
It's a little difficult to hear your question. The student, the program, if I understand this correctly, the program is, it's for public and public charter schools, grade K through eight. So, and we focus on walking and biking. However, safe for a school bus, if it's a circulation plan, we work with the school bus. And we also try to address parent traffic. Answered your question?
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, that answered the question, thank you. And another question was, so for the walking school buses, so like, how does that implement like COVID protocols, if they are any?
No, that's a great question, extremely pertinent question. You know, a walking school bus, it can be three, three students with an adult. It can be five students, two dogs and an adult, it can, it can look like anything. And so pretty much most of the schools that use walking school buses have pretty much tried not to make it, you know, the larger groups of twenty or thirty or forty kids being en masse. So they might be following each other, but they're trying to social distance in the same, in the same thing. So it's not something that we, you know, police, so to speak. But it is, it's a conversational point that every principal has been having. So you're spot on.
And the last question would be, so for the engagement piece, what in full are they like informing the students or engaging or educating the students about?
For the, for the bike safety?
No, for the, I think there was the engagement piece where like
Okay, for engagement, oh yeah, so for engagement, we do more the arrival dismissal planning. We do more the, the picture that I had shown was a bike assembly with fourth and fifth graders. And that's where I asked the police to come in, because they had called me in, because they had a concern with really pack riding during, in one intersection in their particular community. And they wanted to talk to the kids directly. And then I did everything around everything else, and they talked about the, the local concern. So, so that's how we, that's how we work it. So, but we work with the police all the time. You know, we do a bike rodeo, you know, they're my favorite group to have do with the helmet fitting, you know, something like that, so. We also try to engage with the police to try to enforce helmet wearing. It's popular too, for example, working with the police, if they can work with the local Chamber of Commerce and maybe, you know, give out coupons for the kids, maybe an ice cream cone, a slice of pizza, for wearing their helmet, and for wearing their helmet properly. So we try to make it the upside.
Any other questions about Ms. Crocker? Ms. Mary?
To Ms. Crocker through you. Mine is not a question so much as a comment. When you do this sort of work, you often don't hear the one to one rewards of that work. But I just wanted you to know that my own children did the school bus walking tour two years ago. They went to the Lafayette with Mr. Oblinsky, and they loved it. They loved the rewards of it, they loved the idea of it, and they really did have a good time. So I just thought you should know that, so thank you, your work is remarkable.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll share that with my office because I think when we went to Lafayette last, um, it was after an accident and, um, there were a few of us showed up, so we could do everybody in one day. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions of the guest? Um, seeing none, I'll take a cautional excuse, it's her with the customer, thanks. And you guys still hang on, Ms. Crocker, for the meeting for as long as you want, but, um, okay, motion made, seconded, real call vote, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Uh, yes, nine zero, uh, excuse the customary thanks. Um, ladies and gentlemen, your, your pleasure with this piece? Uh, personnel and property or rules, policy, procedure?
I was gonna say rules, policy, and procedure?
And I'll second.
Okay, so, motion's made in second to defer this matter to the second rule, rules, policy, and procedure. Uh, any questions, comments, debate on the motion? Okay, seeing none, can I have a real call vote, please?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine affirmative zero negative. Uh, you have referred this to the Committee on Rules, Policy, and Procedures. Uh, thank you. Uh, next item in the business, please?
Yes, um, onto item number three, which is the, uh, approval of the Everett Public Schools Food Service Amendment. Um, I'm asking permission of the school committee to roll over the food service contract with Witten's New England Incorporated. This would be the last year of a three-year contract. The documents were in your packet. Um, once they are approved, they will be sent to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Nutritional Department for approval as well.
So move.
If I can, uh, from the chair, now that there's a motion for favorable action. Um, Madam Superintendent, is, is there an opportunity for us to, um, over a couple of weeks to revisit the contract with some of the language in there?
Yes, I do believe there is. The one question that I have that I would actually defer to Mr. Oblinsky is about the timeline for getting it to the DESI nutritional department. Could I, um, respectfully request to bring up Mr. Oblinsky?
I'm making a motion to invite Mr. Oblinsky.
Second.
Okay, the motion is made in second to, uh, bring forward, uh, Mr. Oblinsky. A real call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine affirmative zero negative, uh, if we could have Mr. Blonsky for us?
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
So, um, Mr. Oblinsky, um, here with me. So, on the contract, my question is regards to, um, because eleven, section eleven, number five, um, the guaranteed return. Do, do we have time, um, to go back to Witten and revisit the guaranteed return, instill habit to DESI in time and to fulfill for that school year?
Yes, I would believe, yes, we do, Mr. Parker, because we, our next school committee meeting would be on June seventh, if I'm correct.
Correct.
So if you were to ask the school administration to go back to Witten's and ask to see if they could, um, make some amends to the guarantee for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then after the June seventh meeting, if we sent it to the Nutrition Department, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I would think that would give us plenty of time before the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Any other question, Mr. Oblinsky? Okay, can I go with the, uh, the motion, excuse me, the customer, thanks?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, again, uh, rules of remotes say we had to do a roll call vote for everything, so, um, Ms. Celestin?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. So, thank you, so if I could from the chair, uh, I would entertain, uh, someone can make a motion to lay this on the table to our June seventh, uh, twenty-twenty-one meeting, um, in allowing, um, you know, the, our financial team to go back to Witten's, to look at that guaranteed surplus, um, that's in the contract under section eleven point five. Um, because as currently is, it's five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe, um, it could be more. Um, just to clarify what that surplus does, it goes into the cafeteria revolving count. It can only be used for cafeteria related items, but I appreciate, uh, if someone can make that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Okay, motion made in second to, uh, weigh, um, the Food Service Amendment on the table to June seventh. Uh, roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine affirmative zero negative, you have laid aside him on the table till, uh, June seventh. Thank you. Uh, Madam Superintendent?
Item number four is to respectfully request permission of the school committee to go out to bid for transportation that will cover our field trips, school activities, and athletics. We are currently in a contract that is, um, that has run out and is, is expiring at the end of this year, so we need to go out to bid.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, uh, motion made in second on favorable action to go out to bid um, for field trips, school activities, and athletic transportation. Any questions, comment? Debate? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a real call vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine affirmative zero negative, uh, you approve going up to bid for field trip school activities and athletic transportation. Next item in the business, please?
Item number five is approval of a statement of interest for a new school. So, on behalf of the school department, I am seeking permission to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to build a new school. As many of you know, we are overcrowded in all of our schools. Based on our current enrollment and enrollment projections, we are seeking permission to build a new school. Um, our high school located at one hundred Elm Street was built for eighteen hundred students, and currently we have rolled a student population of two thousand fifty-seven, which is two hundred and fifty over capacity. So by building a new school, we hope to alleviate overcrowding at our high school, Arcade Eight Schools, and Arcade Five School. I am making the recommendation that the school committee, uh, request that the mayor and city approve the statement of interest to be submitted to the MSBA. Um, but this is just the first of a multi-step and multi-year process.
Mayor Di Maria?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on, on the motion, I just wanted to, uh, uh, say that, um, the administration fully supports the, uh, statement of interest, and it has been something that we, um, have been working on prior, yeah, prior to, uh, the superintendent becoming superintendent. Um, and, uh, the goal is, um, my hope is to, uh, just to realize that this building, uh, could be the future home of a middle school. We get back to that concept. Um, and look to actually build a new high school, uh, with the area that we're, we're really gonna target it is probably GE Parkland, uh, down in the, down the waterfront where the tennis courts are. Um, I, I really, uh, hope that the school committee can, can rally together and, um, and work with our parents and families to really focus on this area along the waterfront, where we, we were building, building our new, uh, crew facility. And hopefully, uh, at some future point, uh, look to relocate the stadium out of a really congested neighborhood, uh, down at this area where would be like, like a real, um, a real facility for our children to, uh, boys and girls to have locker rooms, facilities, be able to play track, tennis, crew, um, football, soccer, all those different activities to really have a really nice facility, um, and really possibly look at, you know, and I know it's expensive, uh, vocational programming. I had a great conversation with school community and Murray on that today about, uh, vocational programming. So, I think this is a great step, uh, for us to move in to, uh, I, I fully support, uh, going forward with the statement of interest. I look forward to having some great conversations with the superintendent and the, the, uh, other administrators here and also all of you. Um, I know we formed committees in the past. Hopefully, we'll have a good working committee on truly to realize, uh, what's in the best interest of our children. So, uh, just wanted to say I fully support this and, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Madam Superintendent, and if, if necessary, I can invite Mr. Oblinsky up, but just in reading the statement of interest, it was constrained to the high school. So I, that was my question was, this is about building a new high school and possibly re-appropriating this building for another use?
So, my understanding is that in order to enter into the MSBA process, you can only identify one school. You can't identify the entire district as being overcrowded. You have to focus on one particular school. So we are focusing on this school as the example of our overcrowding, and if we are to create a new building, we do believe that that could then alleviate not only our issues here, but at other schools as well. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, uh, there have been conversations, but again, my understanding is that committees will be formed, and this will be an ongoing discussion. This isn't, you know, up to me or anything, but there has been, um, discussions about making this building a six to eight or potentially a seven to nine, and feeding into a new high school facility. That way, students would have access to vocational programs or exploratory programs even before entering the ninth grade. Uh, but again, this will be an ongoing discussion, but that's why it identifies just the Everett High School.
Okay, and I, I knew I was getting ahead of myself, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't constrained by identifying just one school, that it would limit us in strategically being able to identify uses of other buildings. Um, and then my second question was, I know that this work had been already started, and that some land use surveys and reviews had already been done. Um, but a- again, probably ahead of myself with the survey, so because I was gonna ask if we could have access to any of the previous, only because of the land situation, we're a small city, um, with a lot of people, but I, again, I'll defer to, and I fully support the statement of interest, and thank you for taking the time to answer my questions.
And yes, I believe we, we can provide those materials. Um, I know I've been reading through them, and I, and Mr. Oblinsky had a couple of school committee presentations ago and kind of given us an overview of what those plans had looked like as potential options. Um, so hopefully, we won't have to start all over again, but we can definitely provide all of that information.
Yeah, and if I can add, I believe on the, um, the Agenda Center, City of Everett website, um, School Building Commission, uh, that goes back to like the twenty-eighteen, I believe there's information there too. But as we get you, you know, uh, the comprehensive package. Okay. Ms. Sarni?
Thank you. Do we know the timeline on something like this?
I actually probably wouldn't be the best person to answer that question. I would defer to Mr. Oblinsky or actually even some of the people at this table. I know were part of the process originally, um, so they may be able to better answer.
Um, it probably takes five to seven years to build a school.
Okay. And I think it's a great idea that we include the vocational, um, if we build a new school, because we do need, um, something like that for our kids, because there's a lot of kids that don't have the, um, ability for college, but have a trade behind them would be great, because there's a lot of shortage we're seeing in, in our, you know, world today. So I think that's a great idea to put vocational in that as well. Thank you.
Yeah.
Motion to move? Is that a motion?
I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Abaze, I'm gonna let you, you guys come next, please?
Well, I make a motion to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Mass School Building Authority the statement of interest form.
I'll second.
Okay, um, seeing all the questions, the comments, and further debate, um, can I ask for a real call vote? Uh, for favorable action to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine affirmative zero negative, so be it resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Everett, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. For Everett High School located at one hundred Elm Street, which describes and explains the foreign deficiencies in the priority category, categories, which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Everett High School, built to house eighteen hundred students, is currently two hundred and fifty-seven students over capacity. Enrollment at lower grades is increasing. In order to prevent the severe overcrowding that is expected to result from increase enrollment, we submit this statement of interest, and hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The warning of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority will commit the city and town regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Thank you. Next item in the business, please?
Item number six is a request from the English Department Chair for permission to dispose of a number of obsolete or out-of-date items at the high school, um, the list of which was previously, previously sent to you as part of your packet. More for favorable action?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made in second for favorable action. Uh, any questions, comments? Mrs. Murray?
Um, I think this is probably to the superintendent through you. Um, so first, let me apologize to the Chair of the English Department. As an English teacher myself, I know what terrible hoarders we all are, and I know that you worked hard to get rid of the things that you have. That being said, uh, there are several schools and other systems that have sister relationships with foreign countries where they have a shortage of print materials. So I was wondering what dispose of means, and if there's a way we can look into donating anything that isn't actually incorrect, but just is going unused out of this lot of materials to, um, areas in the world that are less fortunate than the United States, and maybe share the wealth a little bit, rather than just, uh, completely trash them.
Absolutely. So I don't know if that's something that has been done before, but we can certainly explore that as a possibility, and I can come back and update you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Um, seeing none, can I have a real call vote, please?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine to zero. You have moved for favorable action to dispose of this materials or donate this material. Next item in business, Madam Superintendent.
Item number seven is a request to pay for the following capital projects out of our FY21 budget. At the last school committee meeting, we had, Mr. Obramsky had given a presentation regarding the many capital projects that we need done both this upcoming year and into the future. After reviewing the list of the potential projects and determining which ones really need to be prioritized this year, as well as we're getting to the end of this fiscal year and identifying funds that we could use for these projects, it is my recommendation that the school department pay for the four projects listed below out of our FY21 budget as they are critical for operations to continue at our schools without interruption. So that would be the repair and ref, repair and refill the two leaking cooling towers at the Everett High School, replace the broken chiller at the George Kavarian, replace the boilers at the Madeleine English School, which are no longer cost effective due to the age and repairs required, and to replace the boilers at the George Kavarian School for that same reason. They are no longer cost effective due to the age and repairs required.
Can I make a favorable action on the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded for favorable action to request, request to pay for the following capital projects out of the fiscal year 21, general funds, which are repairing two cooling towers at Everett High School, replace the chiller at the George Kavarian School, replace the boilers at the Madeleine English School, replace the boilers at the George Kavarian School. On the motion, any questions? Mrs. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you to Madam Superintendent. If I recall, these were things that needed to be done when students were not in the building. So are we able to complete, we, we've been able to secure the contract work to be able to do it this summer.
Yeah, well, that is what we're still working on. And so once we get approval by this body, we can go ahead and start. But we have already done initial exploration and it seems that we will be able to do it when the students are not in the building or that one of the projects in particular that may overlap with some summer programming, but it shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
Mayor Di Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, do we still have ENE Systems that does all our consulting work for us regarding the upgrade and maintenance of our facilities for like HVAC and?
Yes, yes, we still have a contract with them.
I, I would have thought that maybe they would have gave us this information maybe a few years back, so we could have applied maybe for the SBA loans because SBA loans do help, I believe, with improvements like this. Am I wrong or if maybe someone can, maybe Charlie Zabremsky could tell me. Because I think that if you apply for monies, you don't have to just apply to them for building new schools, but you can apply to that agency for, for almost anything. So I would have thought that, and maybe Mr. Brumsky can answer that question if we can invite him before us.
I make a motion to invite Mr. Obramsky.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in, did we excuse him the last time? We did, okay. Motion's made and seconded to, from forth, Mr. Obramsky. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine to zero, negative, Mr. Obramsky. Thanks for joining us again.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Parker, to the mayor, is that okay?
Sure.
Through you to Mayor Di Maria. From my initial looking at the SOI statements of interest this year for MSBA, this is the first time I've actually done the application process. There is a core program and a supplemental program, just as you said, Mayor Di Maria. Supplemental program will pay for possibly window replacements, roofs and like HVAC boilers. The reason we asked to have this done now at this time is so that we could get this done in the summer. I felt that if we applied to MSBA, the length of time before it might get approved would not allow us to do the work in the summer. In regards to ENE and when they first brought this to our attention, I would actually ask that the school committee invite Mr. Bond up to be able to try to answer some of those questions. But there is a program where you can apply for window replacement, roof replacement, possible roof replacements and boilers and HVAC systems to the MSBA.
Do you think it would be, Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Obramsky, can I speak to you?
Yes.
Mr. Obramsky, do you think it would be difficult to get an application into the MSBA for this work? Would this be something that they would, I, I wouldn't see that they would have to really do a lot of like due diligence, you know? I mean, still, I don't know. I mean, could you still procure the work, get the work done, but at the same time also apply to the MSBA for the funding?
I don't, I think you would have to, my belief is, and don't answer, correct me 100% on this, but my belief would be you have to apply to the MSBA, get taken into the program, get approved for, say we replied for all four of these items, Mayor Di Maria, and the timing of when we would get that funding, I would think would not allow us to be able to do that work in the summer based on when their meetings are and when the applications are due. That's kind of why we made the decision so we could get the work done this summer on these four projects.
Okay.
In regards to, you know, when this first came to our attention, I mean, if we wanted further explanation, I would ask the school committee to see if Mr. Bond would have some information on that.
Sure, I mean, if we want to. I mean, at this point, I, my questions have been answered. If anybody else wants to ask Mr. Bond a question.
Any other questions, Mr. Obramsky? Mrs. Lambert? Mrs. Mally.
Thank you. Just to reiterate the mayor's question and hopefully, is there a way that we can look into whether or not we can apply and have the work done and being reimbursed through the grants or, or other ways in which we can utilize that money? Or are we sort of just out of luck at this point because we didn't?
I, I would have to call, Mr. Parker through you to Ms. Murray, I would have to call over to MSBA. They are very helpful and they get back to you right away. I did talk to an individual twice over there today, so I think I could actually find that answer out tomorrow.
Right. I think that if we, if we have to move forward on this, as the mayor had said, you know, what are you going to do? You have to move forward. But if we can find a way to utilize that grant money, that would be terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any other questions of Mr. Obramsky? If I can from the chair. Mr. Obramsky, if you look at items number seven and eight, it's probably about $4 million worth of, you know, boiler roof related projects. Do you know anything as far as the funding goes? Is there a limit to these grants? Is it open ended? Is it strictly based off a need? Or is there something you need to look into?
It's something I would need to look into, Mr. Parker. I'm honestly not sure.
Okay.
I would, I assume it's based on need, Mr. Parker. The schools that are in more need would get them first, but without talking to MSBA, I would not be able to give you 100% answer on that.
Okay, and I think these are all valid points. So my last, my last question would be, if we were to lay this on the table to June 7, and at that point, if it was deemed for favorable action, would June 7 give you enough time to execute administrative function, you know, the purchase orders and whatnot so that the, it gets applied to this fiscal year?
Just because of the extra week in May this year, the extra Monday, that's a three week span.
Yep.
I'm, I know on two other projects, we're already pretty much lined up to do. The other two, we are trying to get through ENE, the vendor that oversees this, we're trying to get them to get individuals to look at the boilers to give us pricing so we can get the most competitive pricing on this because it is part of their contract that they could be the engineer in these projects. I would actually defer it to Mr. Bond to be able to answer that a little better, Mr. Parker.
Okay, I keep on hearing Mr. Bond's name.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, listen, seconded, bring up Mr. Bond. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine and affirmative, zero negative. Welcome, Mr. Bond. This is our friend. Yeah, I think, you might be muted.
How's that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, great, we can hear you. So, so Mr. Bond, you have the questions. Would you like to add, please?
Yeah, so let's, let's talk specifically right about number one, which is the repair and refill the two cooling towers at Everett High School. We started the maintenance on those about two weeks ago. Unfortunately for all of us, we have no air conditioning in this building and could not run air conditioning in this building until we do the work on those two towers. So any summer programs we wanted to run up at this school, we would not have air conditioning. So that's a very serious issue. Obviously time required as quickly as possible. Item number two, the chiller at the Kavarian, we have two chillers. One is broken completely and that's the one we hope to repair. The second one is running. So we are able to run programs there. If we had a little delay there, if that was the, the impetus of the committee, then we would do that and we would survive, just obviously overstraining the one chiller we have left. The remaining two items, the boilers at the Kavarian and the Madeleine English Schools. So as you all know, I came to you approximately a month, maybe a month and a half ago about the Lafayette School boilers, which you graciously approved to, to do that project this summer. The George Kavarian and the Madeleine English are approximately the same years and in about the last three years, we've spent approximately the same money as we did in the last three years on the Lafayette School. So we're in the same projected outcome. So the boilers work. Would we get through next year? I don't know. But if we continue on the same projection that we did with the Lafayette School, it's likely the boilers could go down next heating season if we didn't, or we're not able to do them this summer. That is really why myself, Mr. Obramsky, consulting with, with the superintendent and everyone, we all decided that's two projects we really wanted to push forward. Could we survive next year? It's very possible, but it's right now currently in the same projection, same expenses that we did at the Lafayette School when we ended up with a problem with the boiler. So just to give a, now as far as when ENE brought them to us, are two things. We've been discussing the boilers at the English and the Kavarian, but by contract, every April, they give us a list of concerns going forward for the, for the next few years. So those actually were the ones stressed for us for this year to, to go forward with. I hope that addresses it and obviously I'm available for any questions you all want to have.
Mayor Di Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think in fairness, I don't think anyone ever knew that we could apply to the MSBA for smaller projects. So I, I'm not, you know, looking to point fingers at Mr. Bond or anyone. I think they do a wonderful job. But to hear him say that there's some possible time with some of the pieces, I think I'm, I'm going to give a call over to the treasurer in the morning, myself, and just talk to her, her chief of staff about the program and what the turnaround would be for a statement, statement of interest for a renovation, something as small as, on their radar, I think these are small projects and I want to see what, what answers I can get. But I don't want to hold it up. I mean, I don't know if we, you know, seems like talking to Mr. Bond, the, the heating system at the, did you say the Lafayette School?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's a different project we've already approved approximately a month ago. It's the Kavarian and the English, the Kavarian and English, sir.
Kavarian and English, and you saying that could, it could actually, you could probably get away with another year possibly? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, possibly is a good word.
Right. And it, it's the chillers here that aren't operable right now, right? Is that what you're saying?
Cooling towers.
Cooling towers.
Yeah, but it affects the same thing. The air conditioning will not work at this school. Right now, we have no air conditioning through the summer.
And we usually have summer programming here, Mr. Chairman, do, do you, Mr. Chairman, do we usually have, we have the, yeah, right?
Yeah. Summer management band come, come to mind. Okay, so with that, I had Mrs. Mally and Mr. Barrows after that.
So I have two questions. One, I think is for the Chair and the, and the other is for Mr. Bond. Mr. Bond, let me start with you since you haven't been asked yet and I don't want to keep you any longer than I need to. So you have the Kavarian school chiller and the two boilers at the Mattie and the George Kavarian. We're seeing patterns that indicate that we're going to have an issue at the Mattie and the George Kavarian because of they're following a very similar pattern to what we saw at Lafayette, correct?
Yes, that and the age, Mrs. Murray, yes.
Now, in terms of having to not have children in the schools when you fix this equipment, is that necessary for the boilers because of safety concerns or is there another reason why?
No, so what would happen on the boilers? We could actually do it, once they get the boilers into the school, they would be working only in the boiler room and up on top of the roof. So we would, we could have students in the building at that point. It might be a matter of one day that we might have an issue. We were the only thing.
So it's really only the chillers in which we wouldn't want the kids in the school because obviously it would be hot out and we wouldn't want them in a non-air conditioned building, correct?
That is correct. The only thing on the boilers is obviously if we get into next September, after, after September, we'd have to have heat in October or something. That's the only other reason.
Right, at some point in October.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so then my other question is for you, Mr. Chairman. Can we break up these pieces and approve the repair of the cooling towers and then put B, C and D on the table until the June meeting?
Yes, we could.
Can you do that?
Sure we can.
Second motion.
Which is, and if I can, I'm glad you mentioned that because the cooling towers, it's a lot of money. Please don't take this the wrong way. It's $107,500. Whereas the, the chiller at the George Kavarian is $350,000, the boilers at the Madeleine English are $575,000, and the boilers at the George Kavarian School are $4,000. Maybe Mr. Bond or Mr. Brumsky can tell me what I'm, I'm on line on those numbers? All right, thank you. So yes, to that point, we, we could make a motion, I would say, you know, two separate motions, you know, one to approve item A and the second one, move for favorable action. And then the second one would be to lay, lay items B, C and D on the table to June 7. So, so Mr. Bond?
Yes, sir.
If we were to lay the B, C and D on the table for June 7, and for some reason it doesn't qualify for any type of assistance, do we have time to execute the contract before the end of the fiscal year while we have the money on our ledger?
So I believe we would, Mr. Parker, because what I'll do is I will continue to work with the ENE to get the bidding groups in just in case, the engineering group, so we move forward and that way we can lock in the price until we all figure out the, the funding point.
Okay, so concurrently, while, while we do this over the next couple of weeks, you'll at least get the bid documentation together.
Yes, sir.
So therefore, you know, if, if, for whatever reason, we decide on June 7 to move forward with those three projects, you can hit the street on the 8.
We will do so.
Okay. All right, so, give me some motions.
Mr. Chairman, making motion?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. On the debate, we started with the Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there is a, there is a request to pay for this, this product. Then we're going to move to number eight. Then we're gonna move to number eight. We, there are other requests that we are asking, uh, the mayor to, to look at that in this city. So if the administration is requesting us to pay A through D using the FY21 general funds, that means that we do have the funding, correct? So I, I do not understand why we are, why we are trying to, I'm just trying to understand why we are trying to push again to a third meeting when we do have the funds to pay. If, if we were like, okay, we have to lay off someone, or we have to lay off teachers, we have to do that in order to pay for this, I would be like, Jesus, no. But I'm, I'm just trying to understand, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand. If we do have the funding, why are you not paying instead of be like, can you look at, can you look, especially because, correct me if I'm wrong, in my understanding, as we are going to debate and vote on number eight, to send more requests to the mayor and his administration, I'm sure he could use this, uh, his relationship with the treasurer to see these other, uh, requests that, and needs that, that we have. So my point is, if we do have the funds to pay these immediate, um, projects and needed project, why don't we use the leverage that the mayor has for these other projects that we're going to request him anyway to, to spend money on and to invest on it? That's, that's my point.
Response, Mr. Chairman?
Superintendent also is, is asking to speak.
Actually, I've got the superintendent and, and now Mr. Di Maria, then you.
So y- yes, just to answer that question, because again, I'm new coming into the district, um, and so we have been kind of going through all of the different projects that need to be done, and as you can see, the list is considerable, which is why we gave the presentation last week to kind of give you guys this, this background information, letting you know that we'd be coming back with suggestions for how to and what we could pay for now. I do very much agree with that. The reason that we've put forward these four is because we do have the resources to do that now, and they're the ones that are the highest priority, and we would, uh, it would be wonderful if we could A through K, which is a rather long list and includes the replacement of the roof at the Webster School Extension, which I think is a project that's been, you know, needing attention for several, several years. I would definitely say that it would be helpful to us to, to either go through the MSBA process for those or to leverage, uh, the connections that the mayor has in order to do all of those projects, which total seven point one million dollars. So, you know, I think that we're just, you know, trying to, we, we do have the resources, we would like to, you know, fix these ones that we can. But there is a significant amount that we're still going to be asking for. We're happy to do our part right now to be able to support these repairs. And then in the future, again, the reason I mentioned, is that we are trying to anticipate these things two to three years ahead of time, which is why when we laid it out, we did say what needs to be done now versus next year versus the year after that. So we will try to be more mindful and to anticipate these ahead of time so that we can plan and apply for, um, the appropriate, um, you know, grants.
Thank you. Mr. Di Maria, Mayor Di Maria.
I, I, I understand, um, um, member, member Barrows' comments, and you know, if we have the funding, you, you know, I, sometimes you be laboring things, maybe be even a, you know, a pain later on. Um, I will definitely look into, um, again, you know, never realized we could, uh, apply to the MSBA for, um, for all these capital improvements that we, I know in the last fourteen years as mayor, I think we, I don't know, I can probably get you the number, but I'm gonna say in the millions, tens of million of dollars that the city has laid out, uh, for improvements in our schools, which we were glad to do, as you know. But now to know that we could apply for some grant funding, um, on these projects, uh, working with the facilities crew here and, and, and administration, we're definitely gonna, you know, look at filing those statements of interest. But if the will of this board body is to, you know, vote on seven, eight through D and get it done, and we have the funding, I, I, I get it. Um, um, you know, it's very important that the heat comes on in the fall, um, for the kids and that the AC's working now in the summer for the kids, so in the program, so I, I don't want to hold that up. Um, and the funding is in place, um, you know, I will go with the will here, whatever the will is.
Mrs. Murray.
So, um, I more or less agree with what, uh, the mayor just said in terms of going with whatever the will of the body is. However, I'm loathe to spend money on capital improvement projects if it can be avoided or funded in any other way. There are so many things, when we say we have the money for the projects, something always takes a backseat. Something always gets put off, something always gets underfunded or not funded at all in order to make funding for emergency repairs that we simply cannot do without, like heating and air conditioning. Heating and air conditioning have to happen in order for schools to open. But in my mind, if we can table this for a week and find out if we can get outside help with that funding, then we can take the money that we had allocated to this work and consider the things that we were considering tabling or not funding in the next couple of years and start looking at revisiting some of those ideas. So that was my thinking, but if that's faulty thinking, I'm happy to, to hear that.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, through you to my colleague, I do understand your points totally. If we did not have number eight and all of these other needs, then I would be like, oh, no, let's hold on to it. Let's see what we can save with this funding that we have. Let's replace, uh, the repair and refi of the cooling towers at Everett High, because these are our four needs. Let's apply to the state. But we have a hideous list here that we are going to go to the state to ask, which will be the next item that we will be debating in a second. So if these four ones that we have here, we do have the funding, and it throws the superintendent that should not harm the schools in order to replace these things, that means that this fund is allocated, I feel that we should use the funding to fix what it is. Because if you, if you say that you are in the city of Everett, now, like, and there is a boiler working, the other one is not working, that might work next year. Come on, like, I feel that I am a school in Brazil in my home country. No, we should, we should, we should replace if we have the funding to do so. Thank you.
Okay, uh, the only, the only thing I want to mention from the chair is, uh, today's May 17th. The money's in the budget. Uh, this is money that we cannot carry over to next year. So, um, you know, due to COVID or whatever, uh, we, we know this money exists and it's in the budget to be used. So unfortunately, we can't take it and use it towards programs or hiring for next year, so, um, so just keep that in mind. So with that, um,
You can always get back to the city, though. We could take it.
I don't like to say that if you offer money like this to educators to get them time to spend it, they will write you proposals dead quick.
Okay.
Action?
I'm, I'm sorry?
I, I move for favorable action to pay for the four items.
Okay.
On the motion, I still feel like the recommendation that we look into, um, seeing if we, is possible to still get the grants and apply, even though we're gonna make favorable, because this way we, we know we're gonna have it done either way. It doesn't hurt to ask.
Right, I, I think, um, you, you know, you spun on with that, um, you know, I look at it, we, we probably, you know, um, you know, as far as repairs goes, it's always been, you know, the, the, the schools identify, the city pays for it. That's how it's been, right? Um, unless something has happened through revolving fund, or in the year we're able to be in a position like that. So I'm kind of looking, I'm kind of looking at seven to eight collectively, in the sense that, you know, we've identified need, um, it's been prioritized, and now that there's a timeframe moving forward and there's understanding that we can probably get some assistance, now, let's sit down collaboratively, uh, with, with, you know, our, our, our facilities team, our administration, the administration, the facility teams, and kind of map out, you know, what it looks like going forward for these buildings. And, you know, um, you know, when we can pay for it and how we can pay for it. So therefore, I just think your point about looking into the program is, is, is a valid one, and we should do that no matter what, um, the, um, you know, the all come to tonight is, I would suggest, as a school community member, maybe on, on the June 7th calendar, you submit an item asking for a school, um, building update for this matter. So we'll make sure that it's on the calendar for the 7th, and we can discuss it at that point. So I think the fallacy sometimes is people look at the, the schools and just think, the, the, no. And they're not, right? They're twenty, uh, twenty-five-year-old years old in some cases, and, uh, the Caverians already experienced two-hundred-year-old floods. So, um, so enough on the floor. I've got one motion in front of us that's favorable action to take on item seven, all four items. Real call vote, please.
Mr. Abuzey.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, uh, ninety affirmative, zero negative, you have, um, moved for favorable action on number seven. Item number eight.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you so much. Um, so item number eight, um, is that we are, sorry. We are, um, requesting respectfully to send the following capital improvement request to, uh, Mayor Di Maria, the City Council, and Chief Financial Officer Eric Demus, um, uh, so that the mayor and the city council could potentially appropriate funds to pay for the projects listed. Um, I do want to just note from the previous and, and this item collectively, that, uh, Ms. Murray's point, I definitely agree, that it is always going to be our desire to spend our funds on, you know, instruction on teaching and learning, and which is why I say again, you know, I'm coming into this situation, I just want to make sure, especially since we've been out of school and now we're gonna be entering in the fall, that our buildings are running, and there's no other reason our kids can't be in, our students can't be in the buildings, but that in the future, we will be planning ahead, we will be making sure that we are going through these processes that we should, with the fourth thought, that we should. And also, uh, another note was that we did end up coming back later than we had originally anticipated, and we had mentioned at a previous meeting that because of that, we'd never knew exactly how much transportation funds we would have left over, because we never knew when we were coming back. So since we have identified those funds, and like you mentioned, can't hire with them, can't provide programming with them, we figured this was a good way to support the city, to support the schools in, in being able to, because, yeah, we could give the money back and then ask them to put it into the schools, uh, but we figure we would just be proactive to get this work done now. So that is item number eight, is to that respectful request to send those items to the mayor and the city council.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman?
You are mute, Mr. Chairman.
So, um, most has been the second for favorable action through for item number eight to, uh, Mayor Di Maria, um, and the Chief Financial Officer Eric Demus, and eventually the city council. Uh, any questions? Any debate on the matter?
Mr. Chairman, just a point of information, just, uh, you, you know, the history in Everett was, we never had capital improvement plans, right? Until, um, you know, you know, this administration came on, and we started doing them the last, uh, I believe, ten or so years, so, um, and then we always included the schools. Um, so, and as you know, we, 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 we put together a separate budget of capital improvements every year, and it doesn't mean we're gonna spend all that money, but it's a five-year forecast plan. But this is good to have this capital improvement plan of the schools and all these different items, and now to know that we can go through MSBA on these, on these projects, and, and, and having the advanced time, you know, we will do that, but just want to rest assured that if we don't get the MSBA money, that I'm looking at the majority of these, of these requests, we will fund, the city will fund. As you know, I like to invest in the infrastructure of the community, and these are definitely, you know, maybe other than the replacement of the rack body truck, we'll have to take a look at that, the rack body truck, but, uh, uh, the rest of these are, are, are great improvements to our buildings, so, um, I'm sure, um, they'll be warmly re- received by the city council also, so just want to say thank you for, uh, preparing this to the administration. We'd like you better when you're mute.
If someone, hey, Mr. Wilson, you keep on muting me. I swear I keep on hitting the button. All right. Uh, so I have, uh, Ms. Lambert, and then I have Ms. Cardello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, that helps to clarify. I was gonna ask, what is the, because since I've been on the school committee, we've, we've had a few emergency situations come up where we've had to allocate funding to, so, and in my past practice, we always did, you know, a capital improvement plan. We walked through what's outdated, what's not, um, and that's why I appreciated the last meeting so much, some, some of that forethought, that we were looking at 2022, 2023. And, and I think that's what we should, because as, as much as I want this money to go into instructional time, we also know that the environment our students learn in is very important as well. So if, if a student's not in a comfortable environment, whether it's too cold, too hot, situations, um, facility-wise, it, that impacts their learning as well. So it, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to get some clarification, but I guess, on what is the city versus in infrastructure? And at what point in two updates come back? Would that be during the budget period, or, and this is my novice school committee hat, because last year, my first year was not like any other year.
So, so my understanding would be, and, um, Mayor Di Maria can, can definitely clarify better, is that we would take this list of items, we have broken it down by year, we'll look at what are the requirements for the MSBA, because they do have strict requirements, like about age of boilers, and, and they only have certain items that they will fund, so I think we'll figure out which ones can we apply for, and, um, apply for those in, in a timely way, so the ones for next year, we would, we would apply this year. And then the other items, again, we would work with the city to take them to the city council to be approved. Is that correct?
I, I, I didn't hear all of what Sam said, but, uh, are you asking me, Madam Superintendent, are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, I didn't hear everything that, um, School Committee Woman Lambert said, um, but I, the process, what we do is we ask all different departments in the city to give us their wish lists for, you know, the, um, five or 10-year plan. We do a five-year capital improvement plan, sometimes we do a 10-year, and what we do is we look at those asks, and then we just, um, budget them accordingly. Every year, we spend X amount of, you know, money in improvements in the city, and, and looking at these and what the schoo-, what the schools normally always ask for are always, are always, um, um, items that I put forth to the city council for a vote, because they're always, like the Pollin School, for instance, I think last year we spent, Sir Obrensky can tell you, I forget, but we bonded the year before about four or five million dollars in improvements to the Pollin School. That was, you know, so, just to, to let you know, we always try to keep our buildings, our schools up to date, uh, just like we do any other infrastructure, so.
If I may, through you, Mr. Chairman, to, to Mayor?
Yep.
How do you determine the priority level? You know, so we're, we're giving you our list of infrastructure asks, right? Some of these are, you know, I think of the Webster School Extension.
Yes.
Because that's become an, an issue that impacts the day-to-day. So how does, how does your office and then the city council determine, and then, um, follow back up with the school department? Because there's reciprocal, you know, if, if you put off one thing and then it impacts our day-to-day, now there's an additional cost for us to mitigate those, you know, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, so we work with the department heads, you know, and, you know, this, you know, in this instance, like the Webster School Extension, we, uh, I'll is instance like the Webster School extension, we uh, I'll be peering already um a majority of that roof. So um, we just did um, we did a great deal of roof work and we know there's probably some water doing where, you know, already, I think in contract to do it. Um, they've already been working on the roof. So that one you can, that one you could say the the roof, the roof at the Webster Extension is probably already getting um, already getting done. And so um.
I I guess I guess I should rephrase. So not, I only use that as an example because it there was an impact. How do we get to the point where we're proactive and we're getting ahead of these so that there aren't day to day impacts? And so at the at what point, so you you go to the department heads and I recall a little bit from the library, you go to the department heads and basically ask us to rank the urgency in which things need to be done, e- even in a five year plan?
Yeah, yes. So we we will look at um, you know, capital improvements um a lot of different ways. What are we spending on just, you know, maintenance every year on this particular building? Would completely renovating save us those maintenance costs, those energy costs or, you know, um. So, you know, we 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 will do our our due diligence, right? Um, we also look at um, you know, the money that we're able to to borrow and to bond uh yearly. Uh, what debt has fallen off? How much debt can we replace? Um, as you see, uh, the amount of infrastructure that improvements we've made over the years between the parks and the streets and the waters and sewers and lights and buildings. We just tried to, we we try to keep that a constant number, right? So um, but uh, you know, the it's 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 need, right? We're not going to allow a building, like a school building, to fall and disrepair. Um, we're not going to allow a parking lot and a school parking lot to fall and disrepair or a roof to fall and disrepair. Or if it's not handicap accessible, we're not going to deny that ability to make it handicap accessible. So you know, we 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 just um, there's no matter.
And I I don't want anyone to take it that I was saying that that was the case. I'm just trying to understand, you know, because you don't want it to get to a need situation. And I appreciated my colleague, Mr. Abraze, when the Lafayette that became an emergency situation. His immediate next step was, well, how old's the English school? Because we know, you know, they were sister schools. So you know, that type of foresight of getting ahead of the issue, that was just my question. It wasn't a matter of, you know, um, intent. Yeah. So I appreciate the time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here you two, Mr. Bond. Thought it was just our last meeting when we gave you permission to go out to bid on the the roofs at the Webster School. So did you already do that? We already have somebody, the mayor mentioned something about there already being one.
So Mrs. Cadell, the Webster Extension was what the mayor was talking about. As far as the Webster, we made a presentation the last time, but we didn't actually uh have any motions to go forward because it was going to be presented again tonight for funding.
Okay, so so you haven't actually checked any bids or anything on that. Are we too late in getting this done during the summer? Because I know that project has to be done in the summer. When no one's in school.
So once we've identified how the funding will take place at the Webster School, we would be able to go forward, but I can't take action until we've identified a funding source.
I just worry because what I keep reading about is how everyone is lacking in stock for repairs for building and so forth. Just hoping that we can get this done because that's been a long time waiting for that roof to be back. Thank you.
All right, um. If I could just add, I mean, just uh one thing to consider, uh, F, replacement of free elevator at Devon High School. If we can look and see if we can pay for that through our capital revolving account. That's why I'm the chairman. So, uh, but um, but I I will say though, you know, from a capital improvement standpoint, um, you know, um, if 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 this administration has been asked, um, it gets done. And I think the prime example is just look at the Pollin School, new library, new gym, uh, new um teachers lounge, new bathrooms. So I think the key thing is that, you know, identify the need, sit down um as a group, identify project based, and uh, we can get some stuff done here. So the motion for us is for favorable action to refer uh this item um to the mayor and his administration. Can we roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello. Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in the affirmative, zero negative, you have moved for favorable action on item number eight. Next item of business, please, Madam Superintendent.
So Roman numeral six um are the items submitted by school committee members. Item number, oh no, I'm sorry. What else I'm not yet. Item number nine, uh, the previous Roman numeral is the approval of EHS Student Activity Accounts. So we are seeking to uh change the name of the Class of Twenty Twenty Fundraising Account to Senior Class Fundraising, to add two new accounts, Empowering Young Black Excellence Club and Academy of Health and Public Service, and to close the Crimson Crew Account and Orchestra FAA Clubs Account and reallocate those funds.
Uh. Um, I'm sorry, hold on a second. Uh, Ms. Cadell, is your hand up from the last piece of business? Or did you have a question on item number nine? Okay, Mayor Di Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent. Madam Superintendent, the Crimson Crew Account and the Orchestra FAA Clubs Account, are they um, those clubs no longer? That we today do not have the clubber or is that, can you explain why we're going to close those accounts?
Uh, yes, actually, I would defer to Ms. Giant.
Move to bring Ms. Giant.
Second.
Uh, questions, may I just second to bring Ms. Giant forward? Uh, roll call vote, please. Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in the affirmative, zero negative. Ms. Giant, if you can join us, please.
Yes, good evening. Um, I believe, Mr. Mayor, those two accounts have been inactive for more than three years now. So when we look at the accounts right now, there's a very small balance in in each of them. So I believe one account, the Crimson Crew Account has three hundred and twenty dollars currently, and then the Orchestra Account has a hundred and six dollars.
Okay, okay. Do we know, you know, why they were first set up and 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 what the funds were intended to be used for? And though, actually, I know the crew, crew team is small right now, but I I I didn't know if that was due to that fact, or I know we want to try to build that program back up. I just uh, you may not know the answer to that. I don't know.
Yeah, I I'll have to defer to Mr. Norman and get some more information about the history behind those two clubs. But only because of the small balances and the fact that it's been inactive for over three years, uh, which is why he, Mr. Norman had asked that these two accounts be closed.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And I definitely support the other two clubs having accounts. That'd be great. Thank you.
And yeah, actually, if I could have a motion first.
Fable actions, Chairman.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made instead of a favorable action. Just um, you know, like, A, change the name of Class of Twenty Twenty Fundraising to Senior Class Fundraising. Because every year we change the name from Class of Twenty Eighteen to Twenty Nineteen to Twenty Twenty. So I think it's appropriate um that it's going to be called Senior Class Fundraising Account and uh, and welcome the Empowering Young Black Excellence Club and the Academy of Health and Public Service. So with that, uh, the motion before us is uh favorable action. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, before we take that favorable action, can I ask a point of information?
Sure.
I've had some some different businesses reach out to me asking if they could sponsor a child for graduation. Are we, are they allow? Are we still allowing um, if someone wants to do a scholarship fund to try to engage seniors to apply, is that too late to give out money to seniors?
Well, I think, so there's two different things. So there's either, you know, starting a scholarship, which that can happen at any time. Or if you're talking about adopt a senior from last year, I don't know if that's what you're referring to.
Do you more um, for the awards night, the was I banquet to give to to give a scholarship out? And if some someone to do family name, one wanted to do it in their business name, is that too late or should they contact Linder?
Yes, that would be possible because we have been continually, um, I know that we had one that just came in last week. I don't know when it's too late, but they should definitely contact Ms. Bologna.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, who's had a plan was the seventh or eighth of June. So it's the eighth of June. So um, it's it's never too late until it's June.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded uh for favorable action on item number nine. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello. Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in the affirmative, zero negative, you have moved up the action number nine. Uh, next item, please.
Roman numeral six is the items submitted by school committee members. Item number one is the adoption of school committee norms and protocols, which was submitted by Ms. Murray.
Fable action?
Uh, okay, favorable action?
No second.
Okay, thank you. Um, the motion before us, I can open up the debate now. Um. Mr. Murray is a sponsor, would you like to say something? Okay.
So um, all I really wanted to say is that when I first ran for school committee, I was surprised to find that we didn't have a list of norms and protocols and and uh rules. And when I looked around at other districts, they do have it very clearly laid out. It's on. Um, and I started talking about that two Januaries ago now. And because COVID hit and things got crazy, that became one of those things that we all were sort of interested in. But there just never seemed to be the time. Um, as you know, I was on lockdown for MCAS for a few days. I happened to have the time and my grandparents raised me to believe that if you want something done, you got to be willing to put in the elbow grease. So what I did was I took some time and I went to other school committees' websites and I pulled off some examples of their protocols and norms. I also tried my best to start to align it to the city's charter. Um, but it was in no way meant to be a final product, more like a jumping off point or a talking point. So um, I would suggest that at this point, we um refer this to the appropriate committee, probably policies and procedures to really get polished. Because I really think work like this needs to be input, it needs to receive input from the entire body so that the entire body buys into this. Um, and I believe that of any rule system or policy system that oversees anyone, I just believe in a more bottom up approach. So I wasn't even really that comfortable with putting it out, but I just felt that this was a way to start a conversation that we'd been putting off. So that was my thought process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I will say Ms. Murray's motion to send it to rules, policy and procedure.
You all mute.
Mr. Di Maria, is your hand up on this matter? Okay, okay. So motion is been made and seconded for favorable action uh to refer this uh norms and protocols to the Committee on Rules, Policy and Procedure. Can we roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes. Um, you have move for favorable action and sent it to committee. Next item, please.
Item number two is the matter of the alleged open meeting law violations dated April twenty eighth, twenty twenty one and April thirtieth, twenty twenty one, as filed by Mr. Stephen Fitzgerald, and this was submitted by Chairman Parker.
Um, if I, if someone can make a motion to refer this matter to uh Ms. Canty?
Motion made to refer to uh Ms. Canty, Chairman.
Okay, so um, on this piece, as you you see, this uh, there's been a a flurry of alleged open meeting law violations and it's um, it needs additional resources. So Ms. Canty and her uh, in her role as Director of Human Resources and also as an attorney, um, and I will be uh working together to address the uh April twenty eighth and April thirtieth violation as filed. So um, motion's made and seconded for favorable actions referred to Ms. Canty. Can I roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows. Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in the affirmative, zero negative, uh, we refer this to um, Ms. Canty. Uh, next item, please.
Item number three is the FY twenty one Medicaid reimbursement update, and this was submitted by Mr. Abraze, Mr. Barrows, Ms. Lambert, Ms. Murray and Chairman Parker.
Uh, if I can um ask from the, actually, well, first um, if we could, let's excuse, because we don't need them until the rest of the meeting, Mr. Bond and Ms. Abramsky, thank you for waiting patiently. So I need that in a motion, please. Okay, motion made and seconded to um excuse Mr. Bond and Mr. Abramsky with customary thanks.
Mr. Abraze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know it's in the middle of a vote. What was the motion? What was the request?
We're just going to simply excuse uh Mr. Mr. Bond and Mr. Abramsky. Um, we, because we had them up here for um.
Oh, sure, yes.
Seven and eight, okay.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, uh, nine in the affirmative. Uh, gentlemen, thank you. You've been excused. Um, so on item number three, um, we still have Ms. Giant before us. If we could uh have her give us uh an update on the Medicaid um reimbursement, it's something further than doing on a on a quarterly basis to get understanding and track it. So if um, Mr. New, can you provide us with um an update, please?
Yes, absolutely. So to date, the Medicaid reimbursements that we have um brought into the city treasurer's office has, is a total of seven hundred and ninety three thousand eight hundred and twenty three. We project that we're going to get an additional three hundred and thirty six thousand seven hundred and seventy four dollars. So um, a projection would be a total of one million, one point one three million dollars for the for this year. Some examples of services that are reimbursable are random moment time studies, salaries for nurses, clinicians, guidance counselors, tuition payments, transportation, um, and some capital cost reports. So the the reimbursement work that we do, um, it goes through Shore Collaborative, for which we pay an administrative fee. So the fee that we've paid so far is a total of forty four thousand oh eight nine point nine three and we're um, sorry, this is a projection of what we're going to pay for the year. So far, we've paid them twenty six thousand three oh five.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions of uh, Ms. Giant at this point?
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this seven hundred ninety, seven hundred ninety three thousand dollars uh. um eight twenty-three, this is that we received already. So we have that, I mean.
Correct, the city has received it, not not the school district.
Correct. Okay, and uh so that funding is, so it's definitely, that that expires um in the end of this fiscal year, or or this is something that you can like roll over to the next fiscal year?
I believe it's it's a ream, since it's a reimbursement, it doesn't necessarily have an expiry date. It's a reimbursement for eligible expenses for this fiscal year, but then it is, it's treated like like a general fund, not, sorry, not like a general fund, but like funds that can be carried over into our, into the next fiscal year as well.
Next.
Got it. Which in that case, I was looking at some of our uh accounts. I was looking at that, the spending my weekend looking at that book uh with our budget and and understanding of the accounts and all of that. Is this something that could be allocated to our special education revolving account, or this money wouldn't belong there?
Um I believe it can be to the special ed, you're talking about the special ed stabilization fund that we have recently set up. Yes, I believe it can be put into that.
That's the funding that the the uh, well, the account that the city council recently approved, correct?
Correct.
All right. So is that, is there a way that we can, perhaps the mayor can consider looking at this, uh having this funding, if this could need in the future to be allocated uh to this special uh account that we have created, because it's a revolving account, right? My understanding, uh looking at the vote uh with the council, me, with the request that we made it?
Yes, I believe it is like, almost like a revolving account. So we are, we are able to deposit funds into it, but anything that we want to use it for would require at that time a vote from the city council and the school committee.
Yeah, this committee. So perhaps it is, it me, just came to my mind, it's a suggestion that we could have, that we could have this money uh in that account, that's something that the city, if there is an emergency, the things that the city could help the school, because it is a reimbursement funding. Um and it is, if it stays in a revolving account, it is something that the schools could use uh in the future.
Yes, yes, because it's, it is restrictive in nature in the sense that you can only use it for emergency, like special ed education-related costs, and it comes with a double approval almost of both school committee and city council. So it's kind of protected, I would say, in that way, too.
Got it. So I would actually ask the 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 city, the mayor, and the county, and the city council to consider this, uh and look at this along with Mr. Dean, which uh works for the mayor, but in, I actually put this in form of a motion to transfer this funding to this uh special revolving account as a way to help if it's needed in the future uh the the schools. I made the motion. All right, if there is no second, there is no second?
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay, um, okay, so motion's made and seconded to uh request the the mayor to consider transferring the seven hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars from the general fund to the sped revolving account. Um I do have uh Ms. Lambert, then Ms. Cardello, and then Mr. Mayor Di Maria. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I threw you to Ms. Giant. Uh so I was looking at what is reimbursable with the Medicaid reimbursement. Um one of the things that stood out to me was the nurses. Now, that's a shared cost that we have as of now. So isn't that already part of our chargebacks?
Yes, that's a chargeback. So it's not necessarily a sh, if, the definition of shared cost, like, it's a cost that we pay for entirely, but through our chargebacks.
But I'm sorry, but that's, chargebacks is for school nurses?
For school nurses. And so that's where my next clarifying question was, because it's, we're part of the Medicaid reimbursements that were covered expense, yes?
Right, like, for example, we have a student uh a while back that required um nursing services at home or some, you know, out of district or whatever it was. So um, so yeah, does that help you kind of?
It does, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm not done with my questions, though.
Oh.
Um, so the other question I have, so just, you know, for clarification, this is money we expend, and it's reimbursable through a federal program. Is that correct? And then it goes back to the city's general fund. So the school expends it, we put in for reimbursement, it goes back to the city's general fund. Has this year been any different cost-wise, is is for what you're seeing for Medicaid reimbursement um than previous years due to COVID?
Um, I would say with a fair amount of confidence that uh this one point one million dollars is down from previous years. I would say we've always been at about one point five plus, at least for like the last five years or so, is I, as I remember it.
Okay. And is still my, the other question I have, because this was expanded not too long ago, so it's no longer um restricted to IEP. So it's not just your special ed students. So some people might look at it as it's only reimbursable for a certain amount of students, but so next year, it is possible that we're going to see those reimbursement costs go up, and we're projecting that, right?
Um, well, yes, I I would say the cost is going to go, you know, for this, next, next fiscal year, easily. Yeah. Um, I thought Ms. Giant had a projection on that for fiscal year twenty-two?
I I was, I did just have the book out, but I
All right.
Yeah. It's Ms. Giant would like to answer.
Yeah, that would, that would, I think the projection, I don't know if you're referring to the special ed out of district tuition costs, but yeah, that was gonna, that that's not the whole
Yeah.
piece of it.
Okay.
I can have um a number two by maybe tomorrow or something.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for taking up the time. Um I I'm just trying to get an idea of what this figure would look like um going forward, and if potentially we could see a spike next year or in the next two years, because, correct me if I'm wrong, that also includes um school psychologists. It includes, you know, some of the social, emotional, mental health um within school that, you know, we've been talking about as a necessity, and it it will be well beyond what we would typically consider IEP or high-need students. There's going to be a level of, and a number of students that need additional support and that might fall into this category, this reimbursable category. That's where I was trying to clarify.
Okay, so um, yes, um in fiscal year twenty-two, this will be more than one point five, maybe closer to one point eight million dollars easy. So any more questions, Ms. Lambert?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Di Maria? And Ms. Cardello?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um so I will vote in favor of your uh ask, um but I don't want you to take that as a yes, that I will do that, okay? Um but I'm not opposed to doing that.
Got it.
But I I I'm unfortunately not gonna even be able to vote if more people are gonna speak, because I have to leave. But I did tell, I did tell Chairman Parker that I was leaving. Want to take a vote now? I would vote in favor to request, it it's, you put me in an odd situation. I'm a voting member of the school committee, and you're asking me to, you're asking me to ask me, you know, you you understand, right? So uh
And I would, Mr. Chairman, request that we have this vote, if it's possible, before the mayor leaves.
Okay, um
But again, this is uh your, your, as a committee body, we're asking the 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 mayor to consider, it's a revenue, first of all, it's a gen, general revenue, so it goes into general revenue. We have to, it's not a revolving company. It comes in as general revenue. So we would ask that we
Yeah.
we do a transfer from general revenue to the school budget.
Revolving account.
No, yeah. So so the clip, to clarify, uh would be to uh consider transferring from the general fund to the special education revolving account that we jointly created with the um city council's uh um positive vote.
About a month ago, I think.
Oh, yeah, yes. But that, you understand, that money cannot come out of that account unless I ask it to come out of that account, too. You know that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I get that. All right, so, okay.
All right. Uh, Ms. Data, would you still like to speak on the matter?
Yes, I I feel differently than the mayor about this, because I feel as though we're going to be asking the city council to vote on giving us a reimbursement of eight hundred thousand dollars, but at the same time, we're also sending requests to do all these repairs for seven point one million dollars and change. But I just kind of feel like, let's get the repairs done, and let's look at this at a different time, because I don't want to keep taking. We're asking, and I know it's a necessity, but I I don't know, just maybe feel uncomfortable when everyone is talking about, it seems like it's a take, take, take instead of a give and take. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, uh any other questions to comment on the uh on the motion? Okay, so before us, we have a motion for favorable action to request the mayor uh to consider transferring seven hundred, seven hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars from the general fund uh Medicaid reimbursements to the special education revolving account. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
The mayor will consider it, yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Uh in the um affirmative one and the negative, uh you have referred this to the mayor's office. Okay, um, bottom superintendent?
Roman numeral seven is the subcommittee reports. Um we have one report, the Committee on Finance and Communications, which met on Thursday, May sixth, uh twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM.
Mrs. Lambert?
I move for favorable action to accept the subcommittee report as written.
In place?
In place on file.
In place on file. Thank you.
Okay, motion made and seconded to accept communications. Uh it is written in place on file. Uh any any questions, debate, see none? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows? Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray? Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, uh eight in the affirmative, zero negative. Um I think uh the next item is eight, bills and payrolls?
Roman numeral eight is bills and payrolls.
Okay, Ms. Lambert?
I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of one million four hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Okay, a motion made and seconded to approve uh bills and payrolls in the amount of one million four hundred and forty-six, I'm sorry, one million four hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, uh eight in the affirmative you have approved. Ms. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of one million four hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second.
Thank you. Uh we have a motion uh that's made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of one million four hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, um you have voted favorably to pay uh bills and payrolls in the amount. So before I entertain, I'm uh for adjournment, um I will come out.
I, wait.
We can't hear you.
Okay.
It's back.
Okay, there we go?
Yeah.
All right. So I just wanted to mention that Ms. Lewis uh attended the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' um chat in the course, the first module, um this this past Saturday. So I want to thank you for your continued effort, that continues improvement. And I believe on June first, we have a budget hearing. Is that still the case? June first, time, time and place to be uh determined? Okay. All right, so back in calendars, June first. So with that, what's your pleasure?
Like a motion for adjournment?
Okay, motion's made and seconded for adjournment. Uh can I roll call vote, Mr. Leston?
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, zero negative. You have enjoyed. Thank you for your time.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.